See while they're running, take a few questions, et cetera. We will be taking some questions from the audience. Just remember, we're always respectful, no matter what. And even if you don't agree with someone, you're respectful. And we're trying to take questions, not give everybody a platform to make a speech. So make sure you have a question, if you need to think about it, or run it over, or talk to us even before we get the mic to you, that's fine. Just wave at our or somebody, so we can help you with that.
We may have a couple more show up that we're running.
Oh, yes.
And admire commitment.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we might be adding it as we go. And also, just remember, these are our neighbors.
That's right.
They're not politicians. These are people that... They're putting themselves out there due to the love of their community. And you know, want to do their part to try and make a difference. So just remember that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, like us, it's an unpaid position. So we just do it out of love for what we do and the passion that we have. So, all right, let's go ahead and get kicked off. Nobody is sitting in any particular order, that I'm aware of anyway. So, but we're just gonna start from the front row on the end and work our way across and back. Introduce yourselves, tell us, you know, who you are, where you're from, what you're running for, and a little two-minute speech, so.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Christopher Penny.
Will you turn your microphone up?
Up? Can you hear me better now? Okay, sorry about that. I'm running for city council in Runaway Bay. I grew up in a small town, Boyd, Texas, where I spent the majority of my life. Twenty-one years before. I went to work as a Wise County deputy, and then as a DPS trooper. Currently, working for an insurance company. I handle all their audits for their trucking companies. And I do training and help them get along so they can pass the underwriting and get better insurance rates. I do have a wife, two grown boys, and a grandson. And I should be, I should be at T-Ball practice right now, but I came here, so somebody else has taken up those duties for me. The reason I'm wanting to run for city council is, is that I want to bring a different avenue to the city of Runaway Bay. Growing up in a small city, I want to add things like emergency management. My background and stuff speaks to emergency management. We don't have things like tornadoes, wildfires, any civil unrest, or anything like that. We're lucky enough to have Police Chief Steve Reynolds, who is ex-DPS, that I know very well. So, and I'm a member of the volunteer fire department there at Runaway Bay, so I know the chief of the fire department real well, so we can work on things like that. I'm also for economic growth. But that economic growth needs to come after we fix some things in the city, like our water sewer and roadways. I'm all for that. There's, my opponents has told that I'm in the back pocket of the mayor because me and him are friends, he owns a one-stop, I have lots of friends down there. But if his agenda is to add a water tower, fix our waters and our sewer, then I am in his back pocket, I guess, as long as we're doing good for the city. I am gonna tell you this, and I'm not afraid to say it. I am a constitutional conservative, running for place one in Runaway Bay. I believe in the Constitution as written. I believe in the Second Amendment, I believe in all the amendments. I believe in the life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness for the born and unborn.
Thank you very much.
I've been a Baptist my whole life. I grew up, like I said, in Boyd. I went to First Baptist Church there. Haven't been as much lately. My pastor Tracy Eppen will tell you that, he lives out in Runaway Bay, but I've lived in the Greenwood-Slydell area, and I attended the Greenwood Baptist Church there. If anybody's out there that's from Runaway Bay, I see a couple, lots of radical here. I sure appreciate your support. I have some cards with me. If any, I see some town officials out there that I know, if you know anybody in Runaway Bay, please put in a good word for me, you worked with me some money, did. And I appreciate your time, and thank you. God bless Texas, and God bless you guys.
Say his name one more time. Christopher.
Christopher Penny.
Hi, y'all. I'm Rick Bowlen. I'm from Aurora, Texas. Been at Aurora, Texas for twenty-five years. As you can tell, I'm a motorcyclist. I do a lot of motorcycle rights organization. I'm in charge of a lot of different organizations. Mid-South Miles, one of them, was in six states. Louisiana, Missouri, Oklahoma, Kansas, Texas, and Arkansas. I've been doing that for about, I don't know, what, fifteen, twenty years. I'm the coordinator of Arlington A-Bake. That's a motorcycle rights organization also. We do the HB six, seven. We fight helmet laws, everything that makes us free. Free to ride. We don't discriminate or anything on that part. You don't even have to ride to be in our organization. Anyway... I am running for the city council in Ward Two in Aurora again. I was a council member for fourteen years before Deborah stepped in and took it away from me a couple of years ago. So, I kinda needed a break. It was kinda refreshing. I'm kinda trying to get back in again. It's an interesting prospect compared to what other things I do, than sitting on city council. City council is a whole different world compared to motorcycle rights and different things. And, so, I kinda wrote a little thing here, so I wouldn't forget. I said, "Yes, there's going to be some building coming to our area, and you need an experienced councilman to make these big decisions." As you know, we are growing. I always put families and their concerns first. And one of my issues was, family is first. Our city runs on a tight budget. We don't have a big budget like Decatur or some of these other big towns, so we're kinda tight on our budget. I know the roads need attention. We got potholes that show up like everybody else's does. And we need to take care of those. Also, we have one of the lowest city taxes around. If you haven't looked, we do have real low city taxes. And we're gonna try to keep them that way. When you vote for me, you will know you are represented with experience and with your concerns on issues. Yes, the sandpit has been a big issue. I lived right next to them for the last twenty-some years. I've been there for twenty-five years. I know of that sandpit. And, uh, this, oh, hey, man. And of course, it would take a lot of money to fight the system. He's got a lot of money in that sandpit. And our city does not have the budget to totally go fight him straight up. So we have to watch how we do that. So it has been handled the best we can with the budget we have. I know not to the liking we had in mind, and so this is an issue being addressed all the time. Anyway, thanks for your consideration and voting for me.
Debbie? That was Rick Bowlen, just sit out here in this. Deb or Deborah, how do you, what do you prefer?
Good evening, everybody. Yes, my name is Deb Terrell, and I hail from Aurora, Texas. So even though I've lived all over the country, from coast to coast, due to job relocation. Do we have anybody here tonight from Aurora? So with that being said, why am I running for city council? I am running for city council due to my interest in community. I'm just here to serve my community. I do not consider myself to be a politician. I consider myself to be a statesman. And with that responsibility, when we have issues in our ward, what I do is I meet with everybody, and we try to reason everything out. And I do represent what I'm listening to, and that's where my vote goes. What my citizens of my ward, what they wish. That's how I feel, that's what I, that's how I feel what a statesman should do, you know, representing the citizens of the ward. We do have issues in Aurora, and I will say one thing that is very alarming, is that we have not had a city council meeting in the city since September of 2019. So what we are lacking in is representation for our citizens in the city of Aurora. So I just, I just wanna bring this up to everybody, because we're always, you know, asking for help from the county. We do have growing pains in the city. We do know, Rome, we have ten thousand homes coming in. So, yes, that's gonna affect what happens in Aurora. But in Aurora, we are lacking in facilities. We have a city hall, but we do not have a police force, we do not have a library, we do not have fire, a fire station. So with that being said, we really depend on Wise County for our services. So that's one of the reasons why I came tonight, to let you all know that, yes, we do need help in the city of Aurora. As far as my background goes, I have my degree in ag business from West Virginia University. So I have lived in Aurora for twenty-one years. I've lived in the state of Texas for twenty-five years. Walmart brought me to the state of Texas. So even though I've worked in ag business, I have a strong background in logistics and supply chain. So I've worked in many of the big boxes over at Alliance. So the last one I worked at, we had six hundred associates, and I was an operations manager there. So I am used to working with many different factions in a corporation. And I have learned diversity, communication, and once again, getting results. So the things that I've worked on in Aurora while I've been on city council, of course, is the sandpit, that is a big issue. How many are familiar with the sandpit that we have in Aurora? Yes? And that leads to zoning. Because what we have is, we have zoning, but the zoning is not being enforced. So it is, it is causing distress with the citizens that do follow zoning. Am I pro-business? Yes, I'm very pro-business. On my farm, I have a small business with very unique farm products. So I consider myself to be a little bit of an ag extension agent, because citizens of my ward do come and ask me for a lot of help. And I do help them start up agricultural operations. So in saying all this, I'm just heavily involved in the community, whether it's working on zoning, where we stand with the sandpit, trying to get representation by having city council meetings. We have issues with speeding, especially on Bennett, where I live. We've had eight accidents in the last year and a half. So, and I represent agriculture. Our ward is very agricultural. So I'm definitely into agricultural interests, and I'm also a beekeeper. My farm recently received an environmental innovation award, November of last year. So I do whatever I can do to make a better life in Wise County and in Aurora. Thank you very much.
All right, let's go to the second row. Come on down.
Hi. My name is Elaine Priest. I am from Rome, Texas, and I'm running for reelection for place three on the Rome City Council. I'm gonna tell you that my presentation is maybe a little different than these fine folks that have spoken before me. I want to tell you that I was born and raised in Texas. And my husband and I worked away from Texas for a while. We came back, and we went to Rome, Texas, to look at a house. And we looked at one house, and that was home. And so I just want you to know that when you get to a certain place in time in your life, and you know that that's the place for you to be, that was our experience that day. I was raised to believe that we give the best of our efforts to lofty causes, with both of my parents living that example. One night, I attended a city council meeting to check on the progress of getting the street lights at the entrance of our subdivision. Little did I know, that when we went there that night, there was an opening on the city council, and that I would be appointed to that position. Yes. I still really wonder about why I went that night, but anyway. I fell back on my upbringing, and I made a personal commitment to give the best of myself to address Rome's business matters. That commitment was cemented when I took the oath of office. With education and more than twenty years of experience in strategic planning for large projects, I developed a skill to assess short and long-term needs, build action plans, and develop current and long-range budgets. This business experience has helped me greatly in addressing best business practices for the city of Rome. I also have more than ten years of experience in education and bridging community assets for common goals. It was through the community development where I learned how many types of alternative funding can actually enhance revenue. As a former business owner, economic development is extremely important to me. I've been told, you know, when somebody tells you something, there's always suspect. But I've been told that I am skilled in actively listening, assessing all sides of the situation, and then through courtesy questioning, I can offer reasonable responses to sometimes complex issues. Often, I ask hard questions, but I need those honest answers to make good business decisions. I'm excited that we have the opportunity to highlight my ideas for Rome's future at the virtual debate this Saturday from two to four. I can offer, it's an independent moderator with press who will present the questions and give equal time to all candidates. Rome citizens are encouraged to send their questions to the moderator, and we're hopeful Wise County Messenger will cover this event. So in summary, I'll just say, I've walked the walk with Rome City Council, through Rome, Rome's planning, assessing the condition of every aspect of the city's infrastructure. And we've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. Homework is done, and now Rome needs to take aggressive action to address the infrastructural needs, while at the same time preparing for the massive growth that is pushing our community every day. I want to be a part of that action. And my experience will help Rome do that, take that action, and move forward. As I look back and give my question myself, I can honestly say, I believe I've given the best efforts that I have to give to the city of Rome. And I hope Rome will allow me to continue for two more years. I want to thank you for having me, giving me the chance to speak, and to encourage people to support the efforts of Rome. As you are with county, you support our town in many ways. And I thank you for doing that.
Good evening. My name's Josh McKay, and I'm the incumbent for place one in the city of Rome. Believe it or not, Ms. Priest and I ran against each other as opponents a few years ago, and she beat me out by six votes. And ever since then, we've been working together for the betterment of Rome. We don't always see eye to eye on everything, but we come together with different points of views, and we still do what's best for Rome. So let me give you a quick synopsis of my background, because I believe it's important for all candidates to remember that we're still a person, just like everybody else. And as Ms. Bailey alluded to earlier, we're no better than the residents, we're no less than the residents that we live next to. We simply hold more responsibility than those residents, both legally, ethically, and morally. I served eight years active duty in the Navy, and I come from a long line of military families. I chose the easy route and went to Navy. While they chose the harder route, went Marines or Army. But that's a big discussion in the family. I did one tour in Iraq, doing oil platform security over in the Gulf on two separate platforms. And just the time that we came back from the Gulf was when the mayor of Alabama was raided by pirates. So I extended our deployment from six months to seven months. After that, I was on two separate ships. I was on a freighter, gator, and a destroyer, where mostly I did sonar operations and technician maintenance on the newest Victor XV sonar equipment system the Navy had to offer. What has that taught me, though? That it's taught me how to work as a team for the bigger picture, how to work together with different points of views, how to work with people from different backgrounds. Not just looking for your personal agenda, but working together for the personal agenda of the entire ship. After I left ship duty, I was in three different duty stations on shore. One of those, I was a sonar operator for the independent underwater surveillance system, or seawater system, depending on what age you are. It's changed over the years. I did sonar operations for the entire Pacific Ocean, from Russia to China, all the way down to Japan. After that, my personal favorite is I worked as a command prosecutor in Norfolk, both for and against the NCIS and the JAD Corps. Where I think that, I enjoy putting this out, not everybody wants to hear it. I have a three-and-o record over the Judge Advocate General's office in favorable wins. Again, you can come together with different points of views, but still work for the same end goal. After I left the Navy in 2011, I went to school, and I obtained my degree in criminal justice, where I personally focused in police administration and under eighteen incarceration and probation. However, I really didn't do anything with it, as many people do when they get their degrees, right? I ended up working for Mercedes-Benz Financial Services in 2015. That's where I met my fiancee, who is now sitting down here looking at me funny. Anyways, while working for Mercedes-Benz Financial, I'm now the title specialist and the lease retail specialist over our car portfolio systems, ranging everywhere from smart cars to fleets of trucks. So I handle all title work, registration for interstate registration plans, trucking companies, fleet services. While doing that, though, on the side, I created the first-ever Mercedes-Benz Financial Services Veterans Business Resource Group. And with this group as the chairman, I work with our executives and our CEOs, both in the US and in Germany, to bring awareness for veterans to the company and the benefits that companies can receive when hiring veterans with our viewpoints, our work ethic, and our skill sets. Along with that, we also help our veterans transition from the military world into the corporate world by assisting with such things as interview assistants, resume writing, and skills translation. Because let's face it, you can't go from home-beat gunner to sitting at a desk doing title work, right? Not everybody can make that work. I joined the council about three years ago. First, I was appointed, then I ran on a post, and here I am, running a post. What have I done on this council in the last three years? In the last forty years, three of the years I was on there, our taxes have either gone down, or they have stayed the same. And we're currently number three in the lowest tax rate in the area. And we still get things done. We also, along with that, we did a tax rate freeze for sixty-five and older, for disabled people. And even though we didn't have to, because it's already state mandated, we did it for our veterans as well. We approved programs for upgrades and maintenance on our fire department equipment. Because if any of y'all know, our Rome Fire Department goes everywhere, and they do everything. They're very knowledgeable, and we're very supportive of our fire department. Along with our police department as well. Our police department is growing, and we need to take care of the boys in blue, and we need to back the boys in blue, and the women in blue. We need to back them up. We refinanced a couple of our bonds over the last couple of years to achieve lower interest rates, that way that they're paid off faster, and that we can get things done with that extra money. We've hired a city administrator who is very knowledgeable in negotiation tactics, ordinances, and she's brought our council a long ways. And so as a council, we're appreciative that we're able to do that job as well. We work with UTA to implement a master city plan. That way, we can plan on where our city's going and how to get it done. And out of that, we have a master thoroughfare plan that our public works and other citizens have worked on. We also have a parks master plan that they partner with UTA, so that we can bring more parks to Rome and more parks to the area for the growth of this coming. So what do I want to do over the next two years? I want to keep working on these plans. Now that they're in place, we need to take action on these plans. We need to work on these and achieve these for the people and the businesses and the town that is growing in front of us. Rolling V is coming, as many as you know. We have businesses and homes up and down 114 and 287 that are coming. And we have to plan for that growth. Many people want to keep the small-town feel, and I get that, that's why I'm moving to Rome. But whether we like it or not, that growth is coming, and we have to plan for it. Otherwise, they're gonna take us over and make us do what they want. We need them to come in, and we tell them what we're gonna do. That way, we can keep the small-town feel of Rome. I want to work on those master plans. I want to work on our fire department and keep them up and going, and increase, and help them get paid more for the work that they do. I want to help grow our police department. I want to work with our businesses to implement a Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Committee. I want to work with businesses to help them reinvest into the city to help us grow, so that it's not all just the taxpayers that are doing it. These are the things that I have done on the committee. These are the things I want to do on the committee. And as Ms. Elaine said earlier, we have a virtual debate coming up Saturday, from two to four. All six candidates have been sent personally in by us, so I encourage all of them to attend, as well as our citizens. This is a time for us to have questions and answers with our citizens, anonymous and unbiased. I hope that they all come, and that they join us and give questions and answers and transparency that they deserve, and that I have been giving over the last three years. And with your help, we'll do for the next two years. So with that, I thank you for your votes. I thank you for your help. And God bless Rome, and God bless Texas.
Where can we find that link to the debate y'all spoke of on Saturday? Is it anywhere public, where everybody can just...
We posted it on Facebook, but we will supply it to Wise County Messenger, and we can give it to y'all.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, because we'll post it on our Facebook pages and such as well.
Letter from the editor coming this week that will be referenced in my...
Oh, okay, nice. Very nice. All right, well, you know, city council is not a partisan race. You know, we don't have to declare parties, we don't have to declare anything else. But you can tell just by listening to the speeches where some people are standing and where they're going. And that's one reason why we wanted to host this, why we wanted to have it, and make it a neutral location, anybody can come in and talk, totally free. You're not choosing a party. But how do you feel about things? Where do you stand on your fiscal responsibility and the funding of the cities? We've heard many opinions about those. With that being said, I would like to hear from some citizens that live that have concerns in the area. Take a few minutes for some questions from the audience. And again, I just, I want to keep it to questions, not big statements, but... Darla's got a microphone, so she'll walk around. If you could just raise your hand if you have a question for somebody, right down the front. Your question for both Rome City Council people? Okay.
I'd like to ask Josh about the water, water in Rome, and what the possibilities of changing from Walnut Creek.
Yes, ma'am, so...
Did you hear all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, she was asking questions about the water in Rome, and if there's possibilities of changing off of Walnut Creek.
Yeah, so we know Walnut Creek has been an issue for many years. And I'm sure, as many of y'all say, we have had violations from Walnut Creek. It's not from the city itself, it's from the water that comes from Walnut Creek. The city, several months ago, I believe, we started a discussion in looking at alternative water sources. And I believe, working with our parks, or I'm sorry, our public works director, we are looking at investigating with the Tarrant River Water District in water efforts from them. That way, we get better water quality, we get more water quality, and we get just better overall water. Now, when it comes to something like that, it is gonna take many years to do. It's not something we can just plug in and two and go. We've got to work on our infrastructure to bring that in. But yes, we are definitely working on alternative water sources. And that is a big item that I do want to push for, because, like you, I like water. I love it. Yes, we are working on it.
Okay, I have a question for Deb. Who's...
Whose responsibility is it to have the city council members convene more often? You said that the city council has not convened since September of 2019.
So every month, we are scheduled for a meeting on Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month. And so if there's not an agenda, then it gets canceled by the mayor. So the only way that we can override that is if we have three city council members get together and go to the mayor pro temp and request an emergency meeting. So with that being said, that's from the Texas Municipal League. But what I will say is citizens need to get involved. You know, we're not having an election for a mayor this year. But when we do have city council meetings, how many citizens show up at the meetings? And we do. We do have projects that need to be identified with the growth that's coming from Rome. You know, what we just talked about is water. You know, we got, I'm not in that ward, but Aurora Vista did not have any water. So during the last weather event. So once again, in my ward, I go around to everybody saying, we need to get involved. We need to be asking, why are we not having any meetings? Because for me, the meetings are there once a month for us as citizens to get together and address the issues that are in the city. Whether it's Ward 1, Ward 2 or Ward 3. Because there is a lot going on. There's a lot of growth coming our way. So citizens need to get involved and get to the mayor and say, we need to have our city council meetings.
Thank you, Deb. All right, do we have any other questions? Any takers? We just got to be close to it.
This question is for Aunt Elaine. Hi. I'm just curious. Citizens voted down the plan to renovate the high school last fall. We know that something has to be done. What does the council have as a plan B?
Very, very good question. Well, one of the first things we had to do was to, after that, bond did fail. Those of us that have been on the city council knew very clearly what the city situation was as far as the condition of all aspects of its infrastructure. But the newcomers to the city council, they weren't as educated maybe as the rest of us. They hadn't lived it and breathed it quite like we had for a long time. And so we knew that we had to deal with the fact that every building that the city owns in Rome is not compliant. Not ADA compliant, not permitting. And our own ordinances related to the condition of those buildings had not been taken care of. ADA went into effect in 1990 and in 30 years, Rome has not addressed their own buildings for that. So we knew that we had to be, we had to educate the new group and help them understand the true impact of why we even had the bond in the first place. And that was to get as many of our departments into a building that was safe, healthy and compliant. And it was very disappointing, of course, for the bond. So now that we've done that educational component and we're looking at the new budget, it's very clear to the new mayor and to the new city council member and then those of us that have been there before, that we need to look at those options. And as we look at the budget that we're planning right now for the 2021 and 2022 year. We've also been actively involved with the financial investment counselors that the city has and their opinions on how we can best quickly approach those, get into compliance, get our buildings safe. And so we are looking at additional November bonds. And we're looking at more than just the buildings. We're looking at the possibility of public works, wastewater, some of those additional things. And it will go to the vote. It will go to the polls and the citizens of Rome will have to make those hard decisions. It's true, as Josh pointed out to you, that our tax rate is in the low group of Wise County. And I think, I can't remember if we're third or fourth from the bottom as far as that rate. But we also have some of the forest infrastructure. And so we have to be aggressive. And that's why you've heard Josh and I both say that we have to be aggressive. We have to address those. But I will tell you that the plan is that we are looking at those bonds, how to organize those bonds, how to present those bonds. We're looking at alternative funding. You hear me, you read it in the paper, you hear it from me all the time, that alternative funding, it comes in many packages. And that whereas you cannot necessarily count on it in your budget planning, if you're able to get alternative funding, it frees up money so that you can reallocate that toward those infrastructural needs. And so I guess we're working hard on that. We know it's a critical thing. And we're not going to shy away from going back and trying to get into the bond phase, is my opinion. But want to say a great big thank you and how much we appreciate the fact that you were out in below, seven degrees below zero, helping to get our pipes thawed out so we would have water the next morning. And again, a big thank you for how much you worked so hard for a rush like that.
One and only one out. The mayor did a lot of hard work. The volunteer fire department, people from there. Ms. Moody, who's part of the, she was out delivering food. I picked up some generators and dust and things. I wouldn't have mentioned anything about that because that's not, that's not, I'm not going to brag on myself about stuff like that. It's just people out helping people.
All right. Another question, agree?
It's actually for Eric. Will you explain what a ward is? Because she is using that word and no one else is.
Oh, yeah. So the term is being used synonymously tonight, back and forth with a constituent. So the voters, the people who live in the city and your district, et cetera. So that's what Deb is referring to when she calls it her ward. So it's talking about her. There are three different places in Aurora. So yeah, which is a seat like on the city council. So kind of like we have four county commissioners and plus our county judge. So Aurora has three. City council members plus their mayor, correct?
We have, we have three, yeah, we have three wards, Ward 1, Ward 2 and Ward 3. And we have two city councilmen in each ward.
Oh, okay. You got two in each one.
Two in each one.
Okay. Very nice. Very nice. All right, well, the next question that I'll ask, if anybody else is thinking of anything, we're starting to wind down here. I'll also put it out to our Facebook Live audience. If anybody has any questions, please go ahead and submit those. We'll be happy to take those as well. But I would like to just real quickly let each of you point out what you believe is your city's greatest strength in the upcoming two years, because we know there's a lot coming to Wise County. And also the greatest weakness. So just to keep things fair, let's just go in reverse. So Elaine, I'll call you back up here. Or no, Josh, you went last, did you? Sorry about that. Yeah.
All right. So our greatest strength, I believe, is our fire department and our police department. Because I'm sure as many of y'all sitting out in county, our fire department, again, they've got the most up-to-date equipment, the most up-to-date training. Our assistant chief, our fire chief, they're putting in grants all over the place to keep their equipment up to date. We need to make sure that those guys are paid and taken care of. And along with our police department, they're growing. I think if y'all read the newspapers and follow our police department, they're bringing in countless drugs, illegal immigrants, all along 287 and 114. So if you ask me, Rome's greatest strength right now is our police department and our fire department. And keeping those guys running and safe is my number one deal. Our weakness right now is not facing the growth that's coming towards us. Again, we've got master plans in place and we need to take action on those master plans. The businesses, the rolling V, the other homes that are coming in all around our area, we have to prepare for that. We've got to have the infrastructure ready to take care of all of those people. So we need to put all of our resources, all of our time into building our infrastructure and taking care of those resources so that we can determine the growth and how it comes and what it's going to affect us with. So, thank you.
Sorry, I'm the short one. I think right now that I would have to say, in addition to what Josh has said, is that that Rome invested in itself by making a true evaluation of its situation. It looked at, it spent money and time, involved the entire community in the last two years, figuring out and determining what our citizens wanted, what they thought was important. And then what were our strengths? You know, that is the question and that is a culmination then of what our city, how it sees itself. And so through that long-term planning, the city master plan, the thoroughfare plan, the parks plan, there were many scaring committees that took part in that. There were lots of surveys. There were action committees. And we're about to embark on that also in economic development. So that the fact that we've done that investigation and that planning is the strength for Rome. Now we have a path that we can look at and grow it and use it. Our weakness is denial. Denial that the challenges that we have are real. And there's a lot of folks who just want Rome to stay the way that it has always been. And I understand that. I love that part of Rome that's historic and that feels like home. But denial is, it can be a threat sometimes. And I think that that's one of our weaknesses at this time.
I would say our greatest strength in Aurora is our involved citizens. With involved citizens, you can accomplish a lot. And our weakest area in Aurora is our uninvolved citizens. We just need to get our citizens involved to make things happen. We have growth coming. So I don't want to hear from our citizens that we don't know. We don't know. Our citizens must get involved.
I feel like Deborah does. I think it's our communities, our foreign people, our neighbors. I feel the people out there are very friendly. We have a real good community out there. The crime is minimal. There's quite a few little weaknesses I'd like to see taken care of. We've talked about for over the years. I was involved when City of Aurora was made a city back in 05. And we've always talked about water. We've talked about sewage because everybody's on septic tanks. That's why we can't get the big businesses in there. The only way we can get sewage is go through Newark, pumping across the lake and that was very expensive. We've worked on the water problems a little bit. We got some pipelines run down 114 and a little bit down Old Base. But that's, it's not nothing what we need. We need a lot more than that. We need a good fire department, sooner or later. That takes a lot of money. Police department, we go through Wise County. We appreciate them very much for doing that. So, but I do believe our people is one of our main strengths out there. They are very good, very good people, so. That's about all I got. Thank you.
First and last. So I think one of the greatest strengths in Runaway Bay, not to sound the same alarm off again, is the fire department and the police department. And I think we've got some good leaders in that area. Also think one of the biggest strengths that I've seen was during the freeze. I've heard and seen lots of good stories. So, you know, I've been a part of that community for eight years and the people. I really do. I mean, we all have differences of opinion, but when it came down to taking care of the community, lots of people pitched in. And I appreciate that. And I like to see things like that, the community coming together instead of being at each other. And I think one of our weaknesses is, just like anybody else in the other city, we had problems with infrastructure. The current city council did pass to work on our water system and any water towers and fix those issues. That's just the beginning. We've got a lot more to go. We have, we have to get the sewer, the roads and those type of things prepared so we can bring businesses in here and maintain those. And that's just what I think about the little city of Runaway Bay.
All right, we have some late arrivals. Some of our Bridgeport City Council candidates had some other engagements, but they have finally arrived. If y'all would like to come up, I will gladly let y'all have the microphone for a few minutes on stage and say why you're running and what you're running for and a little bit about yourself.
I think she's making me go first. Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Kaufman. I am running for place three at the Bridgeport City Council. And there's been several reasons of why I decided to run. And one of those was just change that needed to happen in Bridgeport. I always want to be very transparent in this. And I don't necessarily think that what has happened is necessarily wrong. I just feel like with a lot of time on any kind of board, any kind of council, anything like that, you come with a lot of wisdom. But you also come with a lot of complacency. And so sometimes it's time to change out the people so that you can get some new fresh ideas. So that's really where it started. It wasn't that anybody was doing necessarily anything wrong. It's just that it was time for a new group of people to come in and just do a little bit of change. And also, that was, I think Sylvia and I both kind of agree on that. Also, we wanted to focus a little bit more on youth programs that were taking place in Bridgeport. Bridgeport and the youth is our, they're our future. And so we need to definitely make sure that they have all the opportunities as possible. And then it was more also, we want our council to be a little bit more transparent about what's going on in the city. Now I will say this, that we did some research. And there's 6,000 people in Bridgeport. There's maybe inside the city limits, maybe 4,000. There's 2,000 registered voters and about 300 people showed up to vote for the city offices. And I very much was not okay with that. That is a very small percentage of people making decisions for your city. And so I very, that's been one of my focuses. It's just, hey, you don't need to get out and vote. Whoever you vote for, you need to get out and vote because the people who are making decisions for your city, there's very few people who put them in that place. And so we really wanted to focus more on that, going door to door, knocking and talking to people and helping people get registered to vote that were not registered to vote at this time in due time to be able to vote. And hopefully just with all of these ideas that we have, we're very well aware that there's not much we can do until we get in there. We can't make any changes. We can't really have a voice until we actually get on the council and are able to do that. So, so good enough. I'm going to let Sylvia come in now. So, so good enough, I'm gonna let Sylvia come in.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sylvia Ramirez, and I'm running for place four in Bridgeport. So, basically, I can just kind of go back to my roots. I love serving community. I come from a Christian background, so pastor's kid. We weren't always the worst ones, I can tell you that. But anyhow, and still in ministry today, one thing we learned from that is that it's all about community, and I love my community. And so, that's one of the main reasons why I'm running for city council. Second one is that almost 51% of Bridgeport, our demographics are 51% Hispanic people, first and second generation. So, for me, I would like to be a face and a voice, but also to challenge them, to challenge them to come out and be a part of our community, to leave their dollars in our community instead of, you know, going to different places. Fort Worth is one of their favorite places to go, so we would love for them to, to get them also engaged in our community. So, I basically agree with everything that Susan has shared, and yeah, that's just what I wanted to say today. It's good to be here and to be able to introduce myself to you guys. Thank you.
A few minutes left, so I will pose the same question, both of y'all, that they just finished answering, and that is, what do you think the greatest strength of Bridgeport is, and also the greatest weakness right now, in the coming two years?
Greatest strength? Well, I've done a lot of community service in this town, and I've always seen when there is a need, this small community definitely comes together. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of if there's a fundraiser, whatever the situation is, it is a small town field. We love our small towns, right? And that's why we choose to probably live in Wise County in one of these little towns because of the community that comes together. And I've probably already stated, one of the weaknesses is that not enough people show up to actually make their voice count. In reality, a lot of people want to complain about what's going on in the city, what's going on in the county, what's going on with our streets not looking, and the water not being good, or whatever, but yet they don't show up to vote and have a voice about it. So, to me, that would definitely be one of the weaknesses. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Definitely the same thing. I mean, we have a very strong community. Anytime, anything, there's a need, anything happens that, you know, that somebody is in need, our community always pulls together. And, you know, this last freeze that we had this year, I mean, definitely people were, you know, whether it was just, you know, bringing blankets or heaters or something to friends and families in our community. I think one of our weaknesses is probably communication. And so, that is one thing that is, that is very important for our community, is that, you know, when something happens within our city, is that we want to be informed and communicated to.
Thank you. All right. Before we start wrapping up, do we have any more questions from the audience?
Thank you, ladies, for coming. I want to brag on Bridgeport because during the freeze, the city of Bridgeport never lost power. So, we complained a lot about our high utility rates, but we never lost power. Prices for that, and we had a long-term contract with the utilities that we buy, so it might be all the time, $30 a hour. I'd like to ask Susan and I guess Sylvia too, my heart has always been with the youth and children of our community. And you mentioned that, and I know our Parks and Rec Department, I think sometimes is underfunded and understaffed. I think Chris Heasley does a wonderful job. He works tirelessly to make that successful, and would be very happy during COVID, of course, in offering those services. So, what would be your vision for youth services and some things that we might do moving forward to meet that need?
Okay, well, one in, one area in particular is our after-school program. Right now, that was shut, the after-school program was shut down due to COVID, but the school was ready to have it come back, and it was voted to not come back. For parents who have never had to put their children in an after-school program, may not understand the importance of that. That after-school program with students, with parents who maybe work in another town and come back, get their kids out of school, ship their kids somewhere else, and then go back to work and finish up the day, that after-school program to me is one of the best things that was ever in place. So, that's one thing I definitely, once I get in there, I want that to be in the budget. I understand that they're underfunded, for sure. Chris does a great job in fundraising, but it's been kind of hard here. We all know that. And so, helping him to be able to increase that program, which even in the last 10 years, I have watched him crazy build that program, and I just, I would like to see it do even more. And again, we go back to the communication and make sure that everybody knows that that program, those programs are available. Right now, that after-school program not being available is definitely taking a hit on some parents, and it's causing daycare issues and money situations, and I don't like that it's not available right now. So, that's one. And we also have seen complaints about fields, soccer fields, lights, things like that for the kids where they can go and play in the evenings or if they're practicing, that where they don't have to worry about parents shining their lights on the field so that they can practice. All of that stuff needs to be completely maintained. Our youth programs for our sports, to me, have always been well, and they've been great. And I haven't had my kids in those youth sports for at least five years, so I'm not just exactly sure how well they are still flowing, but hopefully, they're still doing well. So, that, that's kind of my vision for the youth, but, I mean, I've raised my children in this town, and those programs have been available, and I don't want to see them go away. I want to see them increase the numbers of kids and parents who can use those resources to definitely increase. Will it take funding? Yes. Maybe there's some budget things once we get in there that can be shifted to make sure that happens, and that's what we'll have to see when we get in there. Does that answer your question? Fine.
I'm not sure that I need to add to that, other than it has been definitely a great place to raise our kids. I have an 18-year-old. She's fixing to graduate, and I have a son, Nathan, who is 22-years-old, and they both have been part of this program. You know, the city has provided jobs for them over the summer. So, we definitely do want to make sure that these programs stay in place and to get a better system, to get it going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any final questions from the audience or Facebook Live? I'll check one more. All right. All right, well, I want to second some things that you've heard Susan mention about turnout. You know, if you've heard, if you've been to many of our meetings, you've heard me say this several times a year, and that is just our voter turnout rates are always low, especially for city elections, school board elections, things like that. The heart of where we live is where it starts. Take care of your own backyard, take care of your community, take care of your schools, take care of your kids. Be involved. Get out there and make your vote count. Susan was using the numbers of 3,000 registered voters and 300 people voted in the last city election. So, that's 15% of the registered voter population turnout, not the population of Bridgeport, the registered voter. So, it's actually about 6% of the entire population for the area. So, they're deciding who's getting to make these decisions, who's leading. And this is, this is not uncommon. This is not a new thing. Same thing happens in our gubernatorial elections, in our bond years, and off elections in November. Many times, the bonds that are passed for billions of dollars across our state are passed with a 22% voter turnout, 32% voter turnout. They are low numbers. Now, Wise County has higher numbers than average, so I will applaud Wise County, but, you know, we still have to get those numbers up. When I say we have high numbers, gosh, I think we set new records this last presidential election, but did you mean go over 60? We were like 60, I don't remember, 62, 67, it was in the 60s, which is very unusual. We're normally about 44 to 47, something like that in our presidential elections. So, it's almost a 20% bump just this last year. And I know a lot of that will get credited to be, you know, the Trump bump or whatever, whatever, and that's great, that's fine, but we can't lose that momentum. And we don't need to lose hope, and we don't need to lose faith. So, be sure and get out and vote. Early voting starts Monday, I believe, for all of these elections. And I want to say a big thank you to our candidates for coming out tonight. You know, these are your neighbors, these are your friends, these are people that you know, you're going to see in the grocery store, you're going to meet them in other events, and you're also maybe business with them, may have business before them if they win the seat that they're seeking in the election. So, you need to network and make friends and have an influence in your own community. And I applaud everyone who's here, because I know you took the time to come, you took the time to show up, you took the time to actually be involved, and that's saying something. And we've got several people watching online as well, but it's just being involved, which is one of our themes tonight, makes a huge, huge difference. So, I appreciate everybody who's come out, and I appreciate everybody for participating and being here tonight. Do we have any other business before us?
Just a quick, Tiffany, this is Tiffany Westmore, and she is Wise Republican Women's Secretary. She's gonna, she has a quick announcement, something exciting news we learned today.
So, who is in CD 13 here? All of Wise County is either 12 or 13.
So, Partiz Decatur is 12. Uh, Bridgeport, Runaway Bay, we're all 13.
Congressional District 13. And Ronnie Jackson represents you. And so, he is going to have office hours in Bridgeport tomorrow from 8:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Actually, it's not, he won't be there, but he is, it's hosted by his congressional staff, and you don't have to have an appointment if you want to go talk to them about anything. It's at the Bridgeport Community Center, the Fred Myers Banquet Hall. Do you all know what that is? Okay. I mean, I have the address. I just figured that you probably know where that is. So, you can just go in and talk tomorrow. I guess he's going to start doing that regularly, but I just got the news.
I think that was it. We do have some training, if you're a member of Wise Republican Women, which makes you, also makes you a member of Texas Federation of Republican Women. We do have some training coming up on May 8th in Fort Worth. I'd like to see a lot of us go to that. I think it sounds fun. It's kind of some nuts and bolts training, but it's also the only one they're going to be offering in our area. So, it's on Facebook. If you want more info, give us a shout-out, text, call. That's all I have. How about you?
Does anybody have any new business before the party, Deb? All right. Yeah, it's always a party here, Tiffany. Come on.
We wish you all luck.
Yes. Best of luck, everyone. Thanks everyone for joining us. Everybody have a great evening.